Well, good evening one and all, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Worcester City Council. And because of the celebration of Martin Luther King Day, it's being held this Tuesday, January 17th, 2023. We are in council chambers and live streamed on YouTube, and it is now after 7:30 PM. The next meeting will be Monday, February 6th, 2023. Mr. Cavan is unable to attend tonight's meeting and sends his regrets. Mr. Apollo, would you please call the roll?
So Mr. Cavan is absent. Ms. Knappich?
Here.
Mr. Myers?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Mr. Sanders?
Here.
Mr. Ansel?
Here.
And Ms. Warden?
Here.
Well, we do have a quorum, and appreciate you all coming out. The first meeting of 2023. We have a large agenda, and the agenda will remain as presented. And at this time, I would ask you to stand and join council in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Next item would be the approval of the minutes of, geez, December 19th, 2022. That seems like a long time ago.
So moved, Mr. President.
All right. Motion to approve by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. And the minutes of December 19th, 2022 have been approved. Well, new, new year, our new year, and welcome. Hope everyone had a good holiday in your family there, Mr. Mayor, and it's nice to see everyone. It seemed like a long vacation, but we're back in the saddle tonight.
Back in the saddle tonight, you bet. So welcome everyone to a new year here at Worcester City Council. I'm afraid the agenda tonight is pretty loaded with items that keep our city moving forward, so I'll keep my comments short so we can get the business accomplished. We have three requests in front of you dealing with lift stations. Two of them are to eliminate the lift stations and turn them into gravity sewers. One is behind Walmart along Friendsville Road, and the other is at the south end of Deer Creek Reserve. Both of those, we've acquired some property right-of-way from different individuals, and the TIF that we brought forward before is getting us up into that area of the Deer Creek Reserve. So it's great to be able to eliminate the lift stations because they are expensive to operate. The other one is to fix and improve one serving the Melrose area, so it's been in there for quite some time, and we have some new developments going to be happening out in that area. So that's one bunch of items in front of you. Another is we have paving and the concrete street repairs, resurfacing Oak Hill Road, West Liberty, and Palmer Street. And then Old Oak Hill and Oldman Road around about is in front of you tonight, so this is something that we were talking about just at the end of last year, and the TIF is going to be very instrumental in making that happen also. Adjusting Ward 3 and 4 boundaries for newly annexed land up there where the, along the new housing development on Oak Hill Road and then up and around the corner on Milltown Road. So, and then start the process of a new 10-year comprehensive plan. We have OHM advisors that are going to be working with that again this time, so that is going to be starting to move forward here for our city. Purchase of new vehicles and fuel for the 2023 year. There are two ordinances that I assume are going to remain on first reading tonight. I say assume because until one of you sponsors moves it forward, we have to take the cue from you on that. But they both have something to do with the R5 district and the housing developments out in that area. We received news that we will receive more funding from the National Opioid Settlement Agreement. It will save our city's capital fund about $93,000. And then there's another $12,000 in operations for our police department and service line. So those dollars are very welcome to start coming back into our community. Lastly, I'd like to schedule with you my State of the City report to City Council. I was wondering if Tuesday, February 21st, at 6:30 PM would work. I know that we have the, on February 6th, we have Bill Sharon doing the hospital report for the groups starting at 5:30 PM, and the 21st seems to be about the first day that I think we have an available spot. So I'll let you folks decide what works best on that. And with that, I'll turn it back over to you, President Byten Dyke, and we can go from there on scheduling the State of the City talk.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. No petitions, and no one signed up to speak this evening. We have no committee reports or public hearings, but we'll have two public hearings next meeting. There is no unfinished business, and it's all new business. And as you can see your agenda, there's 16 items on the agenda. Now, most of these items are budgeted, and two matters, just to remind the presenters, with regard to the rezoning, since we are going to be required to have public hearings, they will be required to stay on first reading. So anyways, kicking it off will be Mr. Ansel on Resolution Number 2023, Day 01, first piece of legislation in the new year there, Mr. Ansel. It is budgeted, won't require suspension of the rules, but for the first time this year, it does require Mr. Apollo to read the title.
Resolution Number 2023-01, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the construction of a sanitary sewer line on Friendsville Road to Cleveland Road and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours.
Yes, as Mayor Brenneman had highlighted, this is a budgeted item, and we knew that this point in time would come eventually. The lift station in that area has worked well, but now needs replaced with more of a permanent fixture. So this will authorize the advertisement for bids and then enter into a contract with the lowest bidder for the construction of a sanitary sewer line from the Walmart lift station on Friendsville Road to Cleveland Road for the purpose of eliminating that lift station. The project involves 6,500 linear feet of 15-inch PVC sanitary sewer pipe with another 1,150 linear feet of 12-inch PVC sewer pipe and 24 manholes. All of the engineering and design and construction administration and inspection will be performed in-house at a saving by our engineering staff. Mr. Kobelarsik is here this evening, but the estimated cost within the budget is $1.5 million. $750,000 will come from the sewer fund, $500,000 from the OPWC grant, and an additional $250,000 of ARPA funds. So being that this is a budgeted item, and it has been reviewed, if there are any questions, I would allow Mr. Kobelarsik to field those, but if none, I would motion to adopt Resolution 2023-01.
Well, I will take that as a motion, and they can ask questions. So motion to adopt Resolution Number 2023, Point or Hyphen 01, has been made by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sanders. Now, if anyone has any questions or comments. I was wondering who that young individual backed that one.
It's Matt.
Oh, it's Matt. Seeing nothing further with regard to this, and, you know, we've already provided the funds, then would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
And Knappich?
Yes.
Resolution Number 2023-HYphen 01 passes. That brings us to Resolution Number 2023, Day 02. It'll be presented by Mr. Ansel. It is budgeted, but before we get back to you, Mr. Ansel, Mr. Apollo, would you please read the title?
Resolution Number 2023-02, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the construction of a sanitary sewer from the lift station in the Spring Run Development to the lift station at the Reserve at Deer Creek and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours again, sir.
Yes, as noted by Lynn, this is a complimentary upgrade to the West Milltown Sanitary Sewer District, and it will eliminate the existing lift station to support expansion in that area in the Spring Run Development to the lift station at the Reserve of Deer Creek. This allows Roger and his team to begin the bid solicitation process. This involves approximately 5,140 linear feet of 8-inch PVC sanitary sewer pipe and 17 manholes. So again, it's a significant undertaking. The funding vehicle of this initiative, though, is different than the previously noted. This will be funded over the amortization period of the TIF for $1,750,000, so this will be financed and then paid through the TIF funding process. This is a budgeted item. It's a necessary improvement. It will be, it will result in cost and repair elimination at our current lift station, and it also will serve the expansion in that corridor. So that being noted, I would motion to adopt Resolution 2023-02.
All right. Motion to adopt Resolution Number 2023, Day 02 by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Any additional questions, comments? Seeing none, Mr. Apollo, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
And Myers?
Yes.
Resolution Number 2023-Day 02 passes. Brings us to Resolution Number 2023, Day 03. It'll be presented by Ms. Warden. It is budgeted, will not require suspension of the rules. Mr. Apollo, would you please read the title?
Resolution Number 2023-03, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for asphalt pavement repairs on various streets and allowing for immediate enactment.
Ms. Warden, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So this is a request to advertise and award a contract for pavement repairs on East South Street from Beaver to Pittsburgh Avenue, East Henry Street from Beaver to Minerva, and Winter Street from Bell Avenue to Gashi. The streets are at the top of the city's road priority list for resurfacing, and the existing pavement has deteriorated in many places, and repairs are necessary to maintain and upgrade those streets. The estimated cost is $500,000, which is budgeted and will come from the Capital Improvement Fund. All engineering, construction, administration, and inspection will be done in-house. I think this is straightforward. As the mayor said, we've got a couple of these on the agenda this evening, and so to move things along, I motion to adopt.
All right, a motion to adopt by Ms. Warden. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sanders. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Apollo, once again, I look to you to recall the roll on the motion to adopt.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
And Sanders?
Yes.
Resolution Number 2023-Day 03 passes. Resolution Number 2023-Day 04 will be presented by Ms. Warden once again. It is a budgeted item. Before we get back to you, Ms. Warden, Mr. Apollo, would you please read the title?
Resolution Number 2023-04, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for concrete pavement repairs on various streets and allowing for immediate enactment.
Floor is yours again, Ms. Warden.
Thank you. This is another request to advertise and award a contract for repairs to concrete streets this time, such as Arthur Drive, Rita Circle, Ruth Circle, and Wayne Avenue, among others. The estimated cost is $325,000, which is budgeted and will come once again from the Capital Improvement Fund. Again, all engineering, construction, administration, and inspection will be done in-house, and I make a motion to adopt again.
Ms. Warden is moved to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel. Mr. Apollo, would you call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Yeah, I'm kind of messed up at the moment. Give me one second here.
All right. Actually, I should, you shouldn't call anything if, we should have discussion first. Any discussion on the motion to adopt?
Just one more second, that's all I need.
Yeah, a little, I'll do a little song, a little dance.
A little song and dance, oh, that kind of thing.
Yeah.
Not that I'm counting, but we've been here for 20 minutes, it's been over $4 million. So. That's not bad, okay. All right.
Anything further? Seeing none?
Okay.
All right. Would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
And Sanders?
Yes.
Ms. Warden will still be in the rotation for Resolution Number 2023-Day 05. Now, this is slated for three readings, but before I get back to Ms. Warden, Mr. Apollo, would you please read the title?
Resolution Number 2023-05, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a cooperative agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the resurfacing of various streets and providing for immediate enactment.
Ms. Warden, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So this resolution is a request, again, to enter into a cooperative agreement, but this time with ODOT, for the resurfacing of Oak Hill Road from West Liberty to Wayne Avenue, from West Liberty Street to Bowman, and, oh wait, I'm sorry, West Liberty Street from Bowman to Oak Hill, and Palmer Street from Bowman to Wayne Avenue. The total estimated cost for the project is $825,000, but passage of this resolution will allow the city to receive grant money that'll cover 60% of the cost, or about $514,000 coming from ODOT, leaving the city responsible for the remaining $310,000 and some change. Funding for this project is included in the 2024 appropriation, or will be included in the 2024 appropriation budget, and in order for ODOT to begin their plan approval process, they need to receive a signed agreement from the city, and therefore, I make a motion to place this on third and final this evening.
All right. Motion to suspend the rules by Ms. Warden. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich. Would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
And Ansel?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended. I look to you again for a motion there, Ms. Warden.
I motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Warden. Is there a second?
Second.
Is that Ms. Knappich?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Second by Ms. Knappich. Any further discussion, comments, questions? We've passed a number of these over the years, and getting some help with paving is always a good thing.
Never turn down free money. Well, free.
Seeing nothing further, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
And Ansel?
Yes.
Resolution Number 2023-Day 05 has passed. We'll be looking now at Resolution Number 2023-Day 06. It'll be presented by Mr. Ansel. It is budgeted, will not require suspension of the rules, but Mr. Apollo is required to read the title if she would be so kind.
Resolution Number 2023-06, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the improvements to the Melrose Drive sanitary lift station and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours.
Yes, to support the continued expansion residential and otherwise along the Melrose Drive corridor, the current lift station requires an upgrade, and this will authorize for the advertisement of bids and enter into a contract so that this work can be completed. It will replace outdated pumps, add a backup power and generator building. All design engineering, construction, administration, and inspection will be performed by our city engineering staff. The total budgeted cost, this is a budgeted item, is $400,000, $336,000 from the sanitary sewer fund, and $64,000 of private funds will support this upgrade expansion. So again, it's nice to see all of these elimination and replacement and upgrades to support one of our number-one priorities, and that's residential expansion and commercial expansion within our community. So kudos to Roger and his team and the city administration, but it's all good news, and we have the fund availability to support these type of initiatives. So with that, I would, motion to adopt, Mr. President.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Any discussion, questions, comments?
Just, I have a question. The private funds, I don't, private, from whom?
The lemon development.
From the developers.
Gotcha. The developer?
Yeah. Based on their percentage of capacity.
Okay.
Seeing nothing further, then, Mr. Apollo, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Knappich?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
And Reynolds?
Yes.
Resolution Number 2023-Day 06 passes. Turn our attention to Resolution Number 2023-Day 07. It'll be presented by Ms. Warden. Again, yet another budgeted item, therefore not requiring suspension of the rules. Mr. Apollo, would you please read the title?
Resolution Number 2023-07, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the construction of a roundabout at the intersection of Oak Hill and Oldman Roads and allowing for immediate enactment.
Ms. Warden, the floor is yours.
Thank you. This request is to advertise and award a contract for construction of the roundabout at the intersection of Oak Hill and Oldman Roads. The roundabout is intended to alleviate the increase in traffic in that area for new and future development. Allowances have been made for crosswalks and the existing bike path, and no changes will be necessary for the entrance of the nearby church parking lot. Construction is expected to take place this year, with most of it being completed over the summer. The estimated cost is $1.4 million, which, as Mr. Byten Dyke said, is budgeted and will come from the newly established TIF fund. So I make a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Warden. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sanders. Any discussion? I know that that will, I know it's a great bottleneck there at Oldman, running into Oak Hill there, so.
It's probably a good time to start sharing that how-to video again, how to drive in a circle.
Nice.
The only question I think I had, Roger, did you guys do the engineering on this roundabout?
We did not.
Do you know if they eliminated some of that incline going to the west as you look west, the kind of a blind, as it goes down a hill? You know, that'll be somewhat eliminated?
Well, it'll be just about the same grade in that area. They couldn't change it much because we have to match to the west.
Okay.
But when we do the Milltown-Oak Hill roundabout, we're taking some of that home.
Okay. Thank you.
Seeing nothing else, Mr. Apollo, would you please call the roll?
Knappich?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
And Reynolds?
Yes.
Resolution Number 2023-Day 0 passes.
We'll look at now Ordinance Number 2023-Day 01. It'll be presented by Mr. Reynolds. It is slated for three readings. Before I get to you, Mr. Reynolds, I will ask, once again, Mr. Apollo, would you please read the title?
Ordinance Number 2023-01, an ordinance amending Chapter 105 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Worcester, Ohio, entitled "Wards and Boundaries."
Mr. Reynolds, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chapter 105 of our codified ordinances contains meets and bounds descriptions, which means a boundary description of all of our wards. And because of the large annexation, relatively large annexation that's gone through in the last several months for the housing units on the west side of Oak Hill, it's necessary to modify Chapter 105, specifically 105.03, to incorporate that newly annexed land. There's also a requirement in our ordinances that we adjust the boundaries of the wards to keep the population within each ward relatively equal, and that this proposed legislation accomplishes that as well. There is no urgency on our part to pass this tonight, but the sooner we get this accomplished, the sooner the Board of Elections can do their work, and it does result in some additional work for them in getting their work ready for, particularly, I guess, with the primary coming up in May. So with that, I'd make a motion to adopt.
Suspend.
Suspend.
Suspend the rules.
Whoops.
I heard that as a motion to suspend the rules.
Yes, and I was just looking at saying, I guess I'm not familiar with the information sheet, saying that suspension of the rules is not necessary, but maybe I'm reading that wrong. But I will make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
All right. Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Reynolds. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
And Knappich?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended. Mr. Reynolds, another motion?
Let's try that again. Now, I'll make a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 2023-01.
All right. Motion to adopt by Mr. Reynolds. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel. Any discussion, questions? Part of the, part of the other thing is, we've had with the census too, is requiring some adjustments to the wards as well. Seeing that nothing else is before the body, then would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
And Knappich?
Yes.
Ordinance Number 2023-Day 01 passes. Brings us to Resolution Number 2023-Dash-08. It'll be presented by Mr. Sanders. It is budgeted, and before I get to you, Mr. Sanders, Mr. Apollo, would you please read the title?
Resolution Number 2023-0- Resolution number 2023 dash oh eight. A resolution authorizing the Director of Finance to issue payment for services rendered prior to the fiscal officer certification of availability of funds and providing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, these, this is the invoice for our long-lost pool umbrellas. They were ordered, what, in nineteen? They were ordered in 2020. And then they got back ordered and then they got back ordered. And so I guess they just showed up here recently. Well, the invoice is 11/23/22. And if I understood the story correctly, we had actually were in the process of purging the invoice or. They hadn't supplied it. And lo and behold, then they showed up.
Oh, you canceled the P O.
Yeah, we just looked at P O, I mean, it was. We actually asked another source that they could potentially actually hand make the covers for the, the giant 20-foot.
Right.
For others, we're huge things for shade anyway, so. But I don't know, there's something going on in 2020, 2021, some of the supply chain. Yeah, lo and behold, it just showed up.
November, anywhere.
So in any event, we'll have them for this, this upcoming pool season, but we do need to take care of the funding, which as you all see is appropriated in the 23 general fund. So I would motion to adopt resolution 2023 dash oh eight.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders, is there a second?
Second.
Did anyone see if they were actually in there or not just stuffed with, you know, rags or something to give it some weight or half?
You know, I'm curious, how many umbrellas do you purchase for $4,800?
I think there are two and I think they're about 20, 20 feet in diameter.
They're huge, yeah.
Yeah, it's a big shade provider, yeah.
So Andre, have you had the inclination to look up what the price of those are now after, you know, some inflation? We probably got a deal.
Yeah, we definitely got 2,020 a pricing on these.
That's amazing, after all this time, you wonder where they were or if they just manufactured it?
If they're backlogged, I mean, yeah, it's just, I'm very, very unusual.
Who would think pool umbrellas?
Well, at least, at least we'll have some shade, so. Seeing that, would you please call the role on the motion to adopt?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
And Knappich?
Yes.
Resolution number 2023 day zero eight passes. We now have ordinance number 2023 day zero two. It will be presented by Mr. Reynolds. It will require at least another reading since, as we discussed earlier, there's a required public hearing next weeks or next council meeting. So if you would, Mr. Apollo, please read the title.
Ordinance number 2023 dash oh two. An ordinance to approve and adopt the recommendations of the Planning Commission and amend the codified ordinances in accordance with those recommendations.
Mr. Reynolds, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. This does come to us from the Planning Commission. Planning Commission held a public hearing on this on January 5th and at that meeting, following the public hearing, they voted to recommend this to council. But we do have to do our own public hearing and you heard earlier that I think that's planned for the next meeting in February and we can address it then, but so even if we didn't need a public hearing, I think I'd want to leave this on first reading regardless.
Okay. Well, we'll consider ordinance number 2023 day zero two as having its first reading, thank you. That brings us to ordinance number 2023 day zero seven. It will be presented by Mr. Myers and similarly it will require a public hearing, so we could not pass it this evening. But before I get to you, Mr. Myers, I'll ask Mr. Apollo to please read the title.
Ordinance number 2023 dash oh three. An ordinance to amend chapter 1107 zoning districts of the Worcester Codified Ordinances to allow expanded manufactured home development within the R5 zoning district.
Mr. Myers, floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. This was also reviewed by the Planning Commission at their past meeting. Lot of information was presented and brought to light, but we're going to be leaving this on first reading again, of course, same as Mr. Reynolds, because we'll be having a public hearing and there'll be additional information, I think, available for council at that time or between now and then, so I'm going to leave that on first reading.
All right. Ordinance number 2023 day zero three will have been read and now is considered to have its first reading. Resolution number 2023 dash 10, it will be presented by Mr. Sanders. It is budgeted. And before I get back to you, Mr. Sanders, Mr. Apollo, would you please read the title?
Resolution number 2023 dash 10. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a professional services contract with O H M advisors for comprehensive planning services and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Sanders, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we've heard previously and as we've actually discussed previously, our comp, our city's comprehensive plan is, is something that we update, try to update every 10 years. And so this is to enter into a contract with O H M advisors to help facilitate this new comprehensive plan. The O H M staff will work with, with our staff to formulate a plan on an update process, gather data, conduct public meetings, utilize focus groups and coordinate indirect development of the plan. The information gathered from the process will present a vision and goal set for the community. Action items will be identified and how to achieve them and the plan will provide a guide for future actions by the city as we address growth, transportation, parks, recreation and public facility needs. Again, the, the current plan was completed in 2014 and at this point, all we're trying, all we're doing with this is to stay in line with that. Again, updating this after 10 years, which I would say, in light of the changes and the things that we've seen go on here in the last couple of years, this is probably, this is definitely something that we need to, need to address and take care of. And with that, I would motion to adopt resolution 2023 dash 10.
All right, motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich. Any discussion or questions? We're mandated by the charter to do this every 10 years and it's amazing 10 years has gone by that fast.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, if I could just ask, this is probably self-explanatory, but will the, the dates of the public meetings, those will all be announced, you know, pretty well in advance in the newspaper? Is that, or social media, how are we going to be letting the public know? Both? Okay. And then will the, O H M, will they be giving a formal presentation to council as well? Is that after the whole thing is done? Okay.
We'll have public meetings in it in the interim and there will be O H M representatives there as well.
Great.
And we encourage people to attend and be a part of it because that, that's how we get the best plan for the city. So I think council members fully engaged, I hope, so.
I saw that the, the school children will be involved, which, what age groups? Is it elementary through the high school, do you know, that they, that they ask for input from?
I don't know that answer directly, but I'm guessing it'll be probably the, the, at least middle school and high school age group primarily, but they may have some activities that they could get the little kids involved into.
That's cool, I like that, thanks.
I would point out a couple areas on the scope of work that we've actually, this is primarily update. The last one we did was a complete comprehensive plan from scratch. This will be an update that we did as part of the scope of work, asked for a few areas to be looked at a little more in depth. Ms. Ansel had mentioned residential use of, we want, they're going to do some residential housing analysis for need and type. We're going to have to look a little more deeply into parks and react, specific pools and facilities. It's going to be looking ahead, we're going to have to show the years. And then the other one, looking at some of our zoning classifications. Various variances and things like that come up over the years, we wanted to investigate that a little bit. Now, all they would do is make recommendations, there'd be a sec, a subsequent step if we were to make any changes to zoning after that.
Is it safe to say that they would look at some of the questions we've been wrestling with on R5?
If we want them to, absolutely. We actually discussed that today a little bit with them, that, that, some of the issues we were looking at, so, yeah.
Any other questions?
We talked about, I know the steering committee, will there be people from the, you know, we had a really good group of citizens on the Comprehensive Planning Committee when it was first initiated 10 years ago. Will some of those people be back or will we be adding in new people? How is that going to be determined?
So that's, one of the reasons we met today with O H M was just to start preparing and we wanted to make sure we had all of the groups and affiliations represented that they thought was important. So we've just started to draft that list and that group, so we're working on that right now. But yes, we do have a couple people from the previous one that are, that are still around. We haven't asked anybody, but just, and a preliminary list as we're coming up with ideas. So we've got, you know, representatives from the school, is one of the areas where we have a representative from the Parks and Rec Commission, but actually one of the high school members that, that are, that's on that. You know, our various partners, the economic development partners that we have, you know, the Chamber, Main Street, W D C. So, and several other, I think right now our list is between 16 and 20 different representations. So, you know, people from Planning Commission, people from B Z A, council members, so we'll be reaching out here in the next couple of weeks as we finalize that list. All the meetings will be open to the public, so anybody can come, but.
I don't see anything further, therefore I turn to you, Mr. Apollo, and ask you to call the role on the motion to adopt.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
And Myers?
Yes.
Resolution number 2023 dash 10 passes. Now I'll turn to resolution number 2023 dash 11. It will be presented by Ms. Knappich. Before I get to you, Ms. Knappich, I'll turn to Mr. Apollo and I know it's, we've been doing a lot of reading, but would you please read the title of this resolution?
Resolution number 2023 dash 11. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to purchase vehicles in accordance with the capital plan for 2023.
Ms. Knappich, the floor is yours.
Thank you. This is one of those things, it's already budgeted, so we have it as a resolution. We are being asked to purchase from Storm Sewer Fund a new dump truck for general maintenance uses. They maintain the storm water system and do leaf collection operations. There's no question that's certainly needed. I was looking to see how old some of the other trucks that are being replaced are. Doesn't say how old our current truck, dump truck for the storm water treatment system is, but those, those trucks are in operation every single day, working hard every single day. And I know the department does not, does not ask for anything new until the old ones are really pretty well worn out. And then from the Capital Improvements Fund, two crew trucks for maintaining the city streets and two pickup trucks for maintaining the city streets. Now, in this, Mr. Denning advised that one of these trucks will be replacing a 20-year-old Ford F-250 and the other will be replacing a 14-year-old Ford F-250 with service box. And they will be utilized daily throughout the year in maintaining the city streets. This, as I said, the, all three of these vehicles are budgeted and they're necessary because we do have a, an aging fleet of trucks that need to be replaced so that we can service the city streets and pick up the leaves and do all those, those good things that our citizens expect from us. So I would move to pass resolution number 2023 dash 11.
All right, motion to adopt by Ms. Knappich, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel. Any comments, discussion, questions?
I probably ought to add that, that at least so the public knows the cost, the two, two trucks for, the two crew trucks for maintaining the city streets, that'll be $130,000. And then the new dump truck will, those funds will come from the Capital Improvement Fund and be $225,000.
I know that typically we get about 20 years or more out of our dump trucks and they are worked very hard and we are lucky to have a service department that can allow them to have that type of longevity. So, and Ms. Knappich's right, the, Mr. Denning never comes here unless the vehicle is on its last legs, so.
I, I did find that we, the dump truck that's going to be replaced is a 2004 International with 84,467 miles. And as I said, from what Mr. Denning indicates, it's pretty darn worn, worn out.
And miles don't, might not seem high, but those engines, they're like a police cruiser. When they're out on, on a job, those engines are running all the time, so they have tens of thousands of hours by, after 20 years, that's for certain. Anything else? Mr. Montgomery?
I would just note that the dump truck, we're anticipating 12-month delivery on that, so.
Yeah, so it'll be 20 years by the time, by the time we get, get it replaced. Okay, would you please call the role on the motion to adopt?
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
And Myers?
Yes.
Resolution number 2023 day 11 passes. The good news is we're around in third heading home and fortunately the resolutions aren't, aren't too long in the next, next three down the line. So hopefully you still got it in your pipes to, to make it through. But I would ask you to read resolution number 2023 day zero nine. It will be presented by Mr. Sanders and this one likewise, like most of them tonight, are budgeted.
Resolution number 2023 dash oh nine. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to contract with Sant Meyer Companies, Inc. for city fuel needs for fleet vehicles and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we've purchased some vehicles, we need fuel to put in them. So this is, this is our contract with Sant Meyer Companies, Red Rover, for one year. They will honor the same bid amount from O P I S Akron Canton Daily Average, which is plus nine cents per gallon. The rate has been the same for the last six years. Sant Meyer is, Sant Meyer Companies is the sole source for the fuel for the city's fleets. Bidding is not provided, but they also have the most accessible fueling stations here in town, which makes, makes sense to utilize them for this, for this work. And with that, I would motion to adopt resolution 2023 dash zero nine.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel. Any further?
Yes, I'd just like to make a comment. I want to highlight Sant Meyer Companies Red Rover's competitiveness. We're very fortunate to have them as a resource in our community and, you know, we consume a lot of fuel in my business and I see all of the city vehicles there. And the rate is highlighted above the Akron Canton Daily Average of nine cents is ultra competitive, so we should be very, very happy and we're very fortunate to have that level of competitiveness in our own backyard. So kudos to the Sant Meyer Companies, great job.
And I, I would add that. And I would add that I was very impressed when I read this, that this has been the same rate for the last six years. So that really does show their commitment to the city. So following up on what Mr. Ansel said, it's very impressive.
I'm going to have to talk to him about a price decrease.
Just for public interest.
Mr. Paul, would you please read the motion, or please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Knappick?
Yes.
And Myers?
Yes.
Resolution number 2023 day zero nine passes. Turn our attention to an ordinance number 2023 day zero four. It'll be presented by Mr. Reynolds. It is slated for three readings. Mr. Paul, would you please read the title?
Ordinance number 2023 dash oh four, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Wayne Township trustees for compensation of lost property tax revenues resulting from annexation and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Reynolds, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. As indicated in the title, this seeks authorization for the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Wayne Township trustees on behalf of the city. This would be for an expedited annexation proceeding. There's three different varieties of those available. The expedited annexation proceeding calls for the division of some of the income tax revenues from the property between the city and the township. That makes it more of a, an agreed entry as opposed to the old traditional way of strong arming your way, which makes for a more adversarial proceeding and puts the county commissioners, who ultimately have to vote on this, in a difficult spot, the county commissioners much would prefer that the two sides work out an agreement as far as how the revenues are going to be split. That's been done here. The agreement's been negotiated, and this would allow, once adopted, them to move forward with the process. And there's some statutory delays in that process as it works way through its system. So the sooner we can get this started, the sooner the annexation can be completed. And for that reason, I'm going to make a motion to suspend the rules.
All right. Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Reynolds, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Mr. Paul, would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Knappick?
Yes.
And Myers?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended. I look to you again, Mr. Reynolds.
Mr. President, I would make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 2023 dash zero four.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Reynolds, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Do you want to add anything more? I think you gave it a good summation as to why it's prudent to use this method and to get the ball rolling.
I guess maybe I left out some of the details about the project, the annexation territory itself. It's a tract of 32.24 acres on Melrose Drive. I believe it's, part of the properties can be affected by the new sanitary sewer up there. But again, we have, I think, people ready to go to, I think it's been zoned R two, so there is housing lined up to go, and we've talked continuously, it seems, about the need for additional housing in the city, and this is one piece of that solution.
Anything else?
I just wanted to ask one, one question. Mr. Reynolds, you said this was, you know, something to negotiate, and I understand the need for this and why we should expedite it, but it doesn't seem like we were doing much negotiating when we agreed to 100% of the existing mileage for over 12 years as opposed to the 80% or less. Can you tell me why that was?
Yes. The 100% level is typically what we have been working with historically. This is actually a shorter period than we've ever had in our previous annexation arrangements, some of which have gone on for 50 years. This is limited to 12. The previous one that we did was 15. As it is today, the property, so long as it remains farmland, generates roughly $24 of revenue per year at our current millage rate of 4.2 mils. The Wayne Township millage rate is 3.7, and so that would equate to about $21. So without further utilities and development, that's where the pricing is today. If there is development that could occur, let's, let's say, if you have 70 homes or so, at today's prices, you'd be looking at roughly about a $3,000 gain for the city during this period. So it is a net gain. And then after that 12-year period falls off, you'd be looking at about a $25,000 total amount. So it does produce more revenues for us from that standpoint as opposed to previous arrangements that we've negotiated with this particular township.
And the ultimate total cost, you said it's not available at this time, is that dependent upon development?
There's going to be a net gain in revenue because we're adding on to our territory, and there's, there's tax. So there's, there's not a cost to that, what there is with the revenue gain. The question is how much? That part is negotiated because in this case, we're asking our partners to waive their, their processes, which can take up to about half of the time that's involved with the annexation piece. So they have agreed to waive that. But when it comes to actual cost, it would be a net revenue gain based on how that millage plays out. This also assumes that we can form boundaries. So we also are looking at annexation today, when that's something that we encounter, looking for a path where we can conform our boundaries because that provides our residents with long-term financial sustainability. If we fail to conform, what happens is we're looking at basically a 50% or so millage rate of what we would have had in perpetuity. The other thing, too, that it does is it also lowers the property tax ever so slightly in this particular district of the property owner.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Saying nothing further, Mr. Paul, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Knappick?
Yes.
And Myers?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2023 day zero four passes. And I don't know if you planned this, since you prepare the agenda there, Mr. Paul. I do note the last ordinance, the last piece of legislation, has the shortest title of them all.
It's just first come, first served, so.
All right. Well, this will be presented by Mr. Sanders. It's slated for three readings, and once again, I am asking you to please read the final title of the last piece of legislation this evening.
Ordinance number 2023 dash oh five, an ordinance amending the annual appropriation ordinance.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The city was awarded chip grant for 2022 and 2023 for housing rehabilitation for all of Wayne County for low to moderate income residents. As we had appropriated in our budget last month, this amount had been, we had a greater carryover than we hadn't, than had been anticipated to the amount of $388,222. So we need to appropriate that amount from the unappropriated balance in the Community Development Block Grant Fund 107. So this is just, like you say, this is, this is a happy situation where we get a little bit more money from the, from the CBDG, and these are federal dollars that pass through the state. So while there is not really a rush to move this along, I'm not sure that it makes any sense to let it set. So I would motion to suspend the rules of council and place this on third and final reading.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Sanders, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Knappick?
Yes.
And Myers?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended. Mr. Sanders?
Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Any discussion? It just, it seems perfunctory in terms of moving money from an existing account to a new updated account is a fair summation. Seeing nothing further from council, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Knappick?
Yes.
And Myers?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2023 day zero five brings us to our miscellaneous portion. No one signed up from the public. I would like to thank Mr. Myers for providing these new insulated cups in the endeavor to be going more green by not having disposable bottles. And I've got to give him kudos. He's also volunteered his dishwasher to wash these between meetings.
And water supplier.
Fortunately, I have two weeks. Because that's probably about how long my wife would tell you it will take me, too.
Cheers to Council and Myers. Do you even know how to operate the dishwasher?
Dishwasher, yes.
Does she allow you, though?
I do most of the dishes.
Oh, all right. Yeah, maybe we can think about getting water coolers similar to what we have out there, and that way we won't have to.
Bring that in.
Bring in that gallon plus joke and let us, who are simple technology challenged, not have to fight with it.
Don't say Reynolds.
Okay. We'll just start down the row and start out this here with Mrs. Warden and go all the way to Mr. Reynolds.
I don't really think I have anything to add. Thank you.
Mr. Ansel?
Nothing more to add, Mr. President.
Mr. Myers?
I just want to say thanks to City Council. We've spent a little over an hour, and in my quick math, 7,608,300 we've spent of the city's money.
Yeah.
Well, not really, because some of this stuff's not coming in for a year, but we approved it. We didn't really spend it yet.
Well, most of it was budgeted, so we looked at it.
Yeah, it's always the most expensive meeting usually of the year.
Yeah, exactly.
Anyway, thanks, everybody, for getting through the agenda quickly.
And I must add in homage to Mr. Albright. He would say that, you know, thanks to them passing, the citizens passing the income tax increase, we're able to spend these monies mainly on capital improvements.
Yep.
Mr. Sanders?
Nothing to add, Mr. President.
Ms. Knappick?
I'd just like to say, welcome back to everybody. I'm glad that money wasn't coming out of my checkbook. It would have bounced all over. And to express my, to the administration, my interest on being part of the comprehensive plan steering committee. And that's all. Thank you.
And Mr. Reynolds, you'll get the final word of the first meeting of the new year.
Well, I just want to thank Mr. Sanders for bringing up the pool umbrellas because in the midst of January, it somehow just feels good to think about. We're only four or five months away from pool season, but it's going to come. It's going to come here.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. President.